Super excellent. Okay, super duper. All right. So we're calling to order the work session. We are going to turn it over to Mary Kay to lead us through this. We have, and I do have the pie chart, Mary Kay. They're good. Okay, super, Mary Kay.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and start with the pie chart. I do not see Commissioner Higgins on the call. Is that correct?
That's correct. As he, when he joins, we can fill him in.
Okie dokies. So do you want me to share my screen? Or do you all just want to take a look at yours? What's the best process?
Yeah, why don't you share the screen that works?
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it showing you my, I'm used to Zoom, I have to say, not as much on BlueJeans. Is it showing the pie chart?
Yes, it is. Yes.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you. I can't see all your wonderful faces when I'm doing this because I don't know how this works quite as well as Zoom, but I'll do my best here. So when we originally got together a few, gosh, I don't know when it was, a few weeks ago, in the beginning of this process, we took a look at bucketizing categories. So I'm going to ask to come back to this. We are now at September 10th. The monies have to be spent by, of course, December 30th. So how this chart works is here is the, whoops, pardon me. Here is, I'll make this a little smaller perhaps. Here's the pie chart. On the left-hand side, as you will see, are all the quote buckets that we chose, what we budgeted for that. And then the total allocation is what we think has either been spent or what we're earmarking to be spent. And then you will see in the column D, total remaining or unspent. Each one of these categories, I'll just show you how I have it. Each one of the sections of the pie chart has its own page, as you'll see down through it. So we can go through these a little bit. But when we take a look at this particular grouping, you're going to see that with what we had budgeted, we have quote overspent, even though we haven't, but what we have budgeted. But what you will see in the allocation, as we are standing right now, what we are allocated is actually under our number. And then this is what is remaining as unspent. So what I need to understand and get from you all, please, is just some, some decisions as to where we are going. So before I proceed with that, does anybody have any questions or comments before I go into each of the categories, each of the buckets?
I don't think so, not right now.
Okay. So I am going to just start off on the administration costs.
Mary Kay, I apologize. It looks like Commissioner Dershowitz dropped off the call. And so hopefully, I'm going to stay with you. And so if we could just, I think Steve will call back in hopefully, so.
Sure. Do you want me to hold, just to take a pause so he doesn't miss anything?
That would be super if you would be willing to. Thank you.
Of course, I'd be happy to. The technology genies might be operating in the wrong way.
Yeah, I'm back on.
Fantastic. Thanks, Commissioner Dershowitz. All right. So the first place I'm going to start, we have the Center County Government Internal Costs. You will see budgeted of what we had, and I'm going to please turn to that internal cost piece. Currently, right now, what was approved at a meeting, I believe it was a little over, might have been just a week ago, was this expenditure. And that includes, as you see off to the left, facilities management, modifications administration, and telecommunications software. Since this was approved last, I think we approved it on Thursday, you all approved it on Thursday. And on Friday, we had a conversation with Kim Stank from ZA. So she sent over that there are additional expenditures that can be now used in here. And we just had a meeting at our CRVG call that what we could include now are a much larger swath of employee salaries, payroll, and benefits. And they would be all of the correctional facilities, from soup to nuts, all of the sheriff's office, all of 911. And so Jason had done a quick calculation and said that, I believe it was just with the prison, and I know Margaret was on this call as well, so she can help my collective memory, that if we did, it was the prison and 911, we would be looking at about $700,000 a month. So if we were to go from March through December with including, I believe it was just the prison and 911, that would be $5 million alone. And Margaret, does that sound like I have that accurate, or am I incorrect on that?
Yes, that's additional funding for the correctional facility and sheriff's department. And we also are eligible to include, if you would decide to do so, the district attorney's office, and Jason's going to calculate that as well. And we've also asked a question about the public defender's office, and we're waiting to hear about that.
Now, when you say the district attorney's office, are you talking about all the expenses from the district attorney?
Yes, that's what they've told us, which is just unbelievable, but very different. And Tim Stank from ZA explained to us that she believes it's the federal governments, that the federal government understands that local entities do not have ways to recover funding from the COVID-19 pandemic. And so in making this a broader, more comprehensive allowable expenditure, it's a way to help local governments. And that was her take on it, but because we, it seems too, it seems hard to believe.
Those are huge numbers.
Yes.
And so one, this is, this is a strategy question in a way. You know, we could continue with the way you've allocated already and make another column on the spreadsheet for these additional, perhaps allowable expenditures. And if we get to a point where we need to spend down our money, you know, should we get to the 11th and a half hour and not wanting to return money, we could certainly use these items. I did ask Tom Martin to kind of take a look at this with respect to where we think we're going to be ending the fiscal year in terms of our expenditures, how much we're going to be dipping into our reserve balances, so that you have some additional information to make a determination. The drop deadline, if I could just say this, Mary Kay, you're probably going to cover this. I don't want to go into your area. But once we report to DCED, for example, that we've spent certain things, then there's no going back and reevaluating what the composition of this category looks like. So we have a little bit of time, but not, you know, not a huge amount.
We'll spend it.
No, I do like that idea, Margaret, where basically if we would, because I think at a certain point, we max out how much we spend as a county government. I think, I mean, we probably could find $8 million of county government expenditures. But at a certain point, we sort of say, all right, this is what we're going to spend. And, you know, but if any money comes trickling back from other entities, we could have a, well, if 50,000 comes back, this is how we use it. If 50, or 500,000 comes back, this is how we use it. So I like your idea there. That's great.
Okay. So any other, so what we will do then is just, I want to understand, we will keep with what this particular number is for right now. But we'll, we'll take Margaret's suggestion of adding another column and determine that at a later time. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yep, that sounds, that sounds good, Mary Kay. And, and one of the things that may actually come off the list, and we would have more money elsewhere, would be the $50,000 expenditure to the elections. Let's, I would suggest keeping it on there, but we've applied, we're going to be applying tomorrow for another round of funds. And if we hear back from that funding source, we wouldn't need that. So more of just a on-your-radar screen sort of thing.
All right, sounds great. Thank you.
Yep.
I think we almost have, I think we almost have to kind of understand that this particular category isn't going to have a hard and fast set number, that there may be some flexibility, some flux in this based on, you know, how money comes back, the election piece that Mike's describing. It's kind of our way to, the account with which we'll reconcile our final, our final usage of the funds, I guess. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
Anything else on this, or may I move on, please? So our next grouping is our municipalities. And we, not that we overspent, but we originally put this category in as a 1.7. So we put in $41,465 more based on our calculation. Margaret has done a great job with this, and I think she's getting some indication keeping, that not all these municipalities are going to be able to spend this money. But based on the fact that we have a greater ability to charge back, so will the municipalities that have police forces. So we believe those that have police forces won't have any difficulty spending their money. So I don't know, Margaret, if you want to mention anything about this particular category, or anybody has any questions on this at this time?
I would agree with the comment that the municipalities that have police forces won't have any difficulty spending the money. They could spend it almost exclusively on paying, you know, reimbursing for the payroll of their police forces. They'll even, that won't even cover all of their expenses, of course. It's the smaller municipalities that I'm hearing from struggling a little bit to find ways to spend it. So I do think that there will be money coming back to us. How much, I don't know at this point, but I think, you know, we'll, we'll see some return here. I would imagine we could even leave this alone for right now, knowing that we'll probably, out of 1.741, get 41,000 back and be within our initial target range. That's, that's, that's a guess at this point.
Yeah. And Margaret, you have a better pulse on this because you've been working with people on this. But again, if they're, keep in mind, this category, we've asked people to give us their, their best projections by October 31st. And if they, this might be where we will have, quote, some found money that we could use based on what we just talked about, additional funds from Center County Government. Any other questions or comments on this? I think I'm interrupting somebody, so I'm sorry.
Now, the only thing I would say on this is I think that one of the untapped ways that municipalities can spend some of the money if they feel like they don't have enough identified expenditures would be to look to donate some of this to the authorities that they work with. And so I think, I think that'll be, as we get down the stretch, to suggest to them, well, you could always allocate some of this to your authority that you work with. I think that would be a way, a way to spend some of the money.
And I've been making sure, I've been suggesting that to municipalities that they could do subrecipient agreements. The other thing that we've learned that they can do is they can purchase, if they, if a municipality purchases PPE itself and wants to give PPE to the Pleasant Gap Little League, they may do so. So it's a way to get other, that type of equipment out there. Because our PPE amount, while it's very generous, isn't going to be able to cover absolutely everybody. So we've been trying to promote that as well.
And just finally, if they were to send money to their authorities and such, they would have to fill out a subrecipient agreement with their authorities. And Margaret, I don't know, have we been getting the legal agreements back? Where are we at on that, please?
We have three back right now, so I'm waiting to batch them and bring them in for commissioners' review and approval.
Thank you.
But yes, if, if any municipality gives to an authority or a government entity, there must be a formally executed subrecipient agreement. And they can model the one that we gave to them.
Aren't there any other questions or comments before I move on from this one, this category, this bucket?
This is Mark. I was.
Hi, Mark.
finishing off all the businesses on North Atherton.
Good for you.
So I think I heard Margaret say we've had three agreements come back, which means we have 32 still out. And any other major changes to the municipal funding?
The only difference, I'm just going to throw, I'm not sure what all you heard, Mark, but the Treasury expanded the amount of payroll and benefits that can be, that can be used. And so Center County Government could gather some more money based on 911, the prison, the sheriff's office. We don't know about the DA's office, but any sort of, you know, police force. And so, so will the municipalities that have police force be able to gather, to be able to quote, "charge back." So they've become looser on their guidelines on that. I don't know if I explained that correctly, but I just wanted to let you know about that.
Good. Yeah, I didn't know that the improved and widened guidelines apply to municipalities or not. That's good to hear.
Yes, it does. Thank you. And anything else on this? I just don't, I don't want to hurry, but I don't want to spend too long. I'm heading over to education then. This is a category that we really haven't touched, other than we have designated 1.2 in this. And what I did was, I did go back through and tried to get accurate calculations. You will see that I still had difficulty getting from Keystone School District and Tyrone just for Central County children. I asked that same question, I don't know how many different ways, and all I could get is our ballparks. And Head Start is Sen and Claire, which is Center and Clearfield. That, again, is a ballpark. So the question I have is, then, we had earmarked or put into this bucket 1.2, and we looked at, this was what we were looking at, is perhaps $5 a student. And to get the number that we have below, what you also will see is that there, I put in the Central Counties Youth Center. I've been back and forth talking to Dana Droll, who's just a real delightful person to talk with. We do not have any money allocated here. Currently, they only have 14 participants or 14 youth there now. So I don't think we can do anything as far as a designation. Keeping in mind, there, we are one of five counties. And so how, how the school districts would work is exactly like municipalities. We would give them an award, and they would, we would have to fill out an agreement with them, like the municipality agreement, and they would have to give us receipts for the, for what they need from this CARES Act funding. So I'm just going to be, I'm just going to pause for a minute just to ask about some discussion on this category.
Well, I think there are. I think to go to Commissioner Dershowitz's point, it does sound like we have a healthy amount of funding that we can give out there in that category. And we had already allocated CPI. So I thought we did 100,000 to CPI. Am I wrong on that?
We didn't, well, we didn't put anything out in this category. That's why I'm so happy to have you all in this meeting to determine what we want.
We had already discussed 100,000 for CPI.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
That's going to go into their nursing program, I believe, to buy mannequins and nurse training equipment. But they need that ASAP, so.
Yeah, for some reason, my computer doesn't want to work. I could make that addition, but I can certainly change that. Again, keeping in mind that, so Steve, I appreciate that if they want to, there we go. If they are going to go into their nursing program, they, it's going to be like the municipality, they will have to send us receipts, you know, for that, and I'm sure they'd be able to do that.
And then in terms of, I'm just, I'm just looking through the notes here. And then I think we had talked about, or at least my, my suggestion was to take, because we're going to have a quarter of a million, and then we would, we would take essentially half a million out of this and get it to the school districts, basically divvy it up based upon all the different school districts. So if those are all of your populations for students, I think it would just be taking half a million and dividing it out based upon, you know, the proportions, or do it per, a dollar per student is close to $1 million when it adds up to all those. But that would be my suggestion.
Oh, I can play around with the numbers that way.
Yeah, yeah.
So that, I just, I'm, I'm going to bring one thing to your attention, is that when I talk to Kim Stank, I mean, been in communication with her quite a bit. I am absolutely, of course, I will go with your decisions. She just had said that school districts are getting a lot of money and from a lot of different sources. And we are one of the only counties that are giving money to school districts. So I just wanted to let you know that.
And that was going to be, what I was going to mention is, some of our funding areas are seeing very little grant money at this point. But the schools are receiving substantial amounts of grant money. And even before, we have added in the additional monies that might help out the county and the municipalities with the broader definitions from a couple minutes ago, we're already at a deficit. We're already spending more than what we, what we're receiving. So I would think that this might be one of a couple of places to try to make the deficit up.
Well, again, yeah, my suggestion is half a million. I think there would be still some wiggle room there because we're only talking about, I think it would be a total of 850,000. We still have 300,000 left over that we can allocate elsewhere, so.
So are you saying $500,000 for the, for this whole bucket? And, but 100 of that goes into CPI and 250 goes into Penn State?
No, that's a good question, Mary Kay. It would essentially be, it would basically then be a total of 850,000.
This whole bucket would be 850?
Yep. Penn State, quarter million, CPI, 100,000, and then half a million for all those other school districts based upon student population. And then it would essentially be very much like the government route, where they would get a letter, you know, here's your total allotment, you've got to send us receipts, et cetera.
Okay. So I do have a question. Is the Center Counties Youth Center, I know Steve, you are on that board. I've been helping Dana, trying to figure out, you know, how to best capture her cost. Do you have any indication of how much that you want to?
I might have a better case to borrow when we meet, but I do not have a number. But I think all the, all the counties are going to throw money in.
Yeah, I, go ahead, Steve, sorry. I was just going to say, I don't know if this would be education. I'm not thinking this is yet education. I, you might have, my, my thinking would be that, the fact that it's a youth, youth detention center, that maybe it was lumped into education. Yeah, I'm thinking this would be probably governmental, because I believe. Yeah, so it could just be where we, or it could be a Center County designation. Could we do it through that pot? But I'm comfortable giving them, you know, 50,000, Steve, or I don't know what you're thinking, but.
I think that would cover it. Something goes in it anyway.
Yeah. So then we would still, out of this whole bucket, have a quarter of a million dollars that we would be able to reduce it down and put it elsewhere. Yeah, but I think, I think that should be reflected maybe in our own spending or somewhere else. But anyway, we, that's, that's, that's technical details at that point.
Well, we're a one-fifth owner of that property up there and that, that concern. So it actually goes back into Center County.
So I just need to be clear, are we looking at, am I taking that out to the, the $850,000, that, that $50,000?
Mary Kay, I'm sorry, your audio cut, cut out there. Sorry.
I'm so sorry. Yeah. If we take this out of here, so we want to put that into a different bucket. So am I still looking at $850,000 and take this, remove this completely, the Center County Youth Center?
Yeah, so that can go government or wherever else you want to put it in the, in the tabs there. Yeah.
Okay. All right. All righty.
There could just be another tab, miscellaneous, but yeah.
Anything else on this, any discussion? So I'm hearing $850,000 in this bucket, $100,000 to CPI, and then $250,000 to Penn State.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still thinking that's a bit salty for school districts that are already receiving substantial amounts of federal money. And they do, if they really need to, have the ability to increase the property taxes to cover their expenses.
I'm just going to say again, what Kim had said is that they are receiving other funds. It's entirely your decision what you want to do with this. And, oh, again, we are one of, I asked how many other counties that she knows of that are giving to school districts, and she didn't have an exact number, but she, she didn't think, she thought maybe there was one or two other counties that they've been working with. Keep in mind, knowing they are not working with all just, all counties. So. Any other?
I'm fine with giving to the districts, but I'm a little more comfortable with a half a million or something a little north of a half million. I mean, we're, we're already overspending the budget by like 1.2 mil, and we haven't even accounted for all of our new costs yet.
Yeah, I'm good at half a million, Steve, so you, whatever your, whatever your thought is.
So we're referring to the half million. Let's, let's, let's roll back. What do you want to spend the half million on again? I want to make sure I got apples to apples here.
Absolutely. So half a million would be divvied out to all of the school districts based upon their student population. And then, and then in addition to that, CPI, we get their 100,000. Penn State would get their quarter million. The total education would be roughly 850,000.
Yeah, that's not, darn, that's not what I was saying. I was saying a half million for the whole bucket. So if Penn State gets 250 and CPI gets. So if Penn State gets 250 and CPI gets 100, that would leave 150 for the school districts, which was still substantially, way substantially more than we were already going to be giving them.
So essentially, it's basically do, do, would the, Mark's proposal is 100, Mark's proposal is 150,000 divvied out amongst the school districts, and I'm saying half a million divvied out to the school districts.
Well, what, what type of impact is our money going to have on the school districts themselves? I know what it'll do to CPI. I know what it'll do for Penn State, but what, what do the school districts need? Do they need money? I mean, what, I'm trying to decide here.
Well, the, the school districts will be like the municipalities. They will have to provide us with receipts. So it would be for things like PPE, it would be like, say they had, um, I believe if they had any.
I'm not looking at the 500-foot view. I'm talking about, have you, have you actually talked to the school districts to see what it is that they, what they are going to use it on, or haven't we had conversations with them yet?
I just had conversations based on number of students. I did not have conversations of asking them what they wanted to do, other than the ones like Bald Eagle put in for $650,000. They wanted to redo their, um, uh, heating and air conditioning system, Phillipsburg Osceola. I'd have to go back to see what they were asking. You see the things in the blue. Um, that's what they requested.
But yeah, when I spoke with school district directors, they were, uh, saying that they could, that they could certainly use the funds. And, uh, it would be going to mostly PPE and some of the virtual learning, uh, that they're doing, uh, uh, in terms of making sure that the kids who are virtual learning or the PPE for the safety of the kids who are doing in-school learning, uh, would be, would be compensated for it. And I, from my perspective, I thought that was a good use of, good use of funds. We, we could be in the middle. We could look at doing 300,000, um, instead of the 150 or 500. It could be 300,000, be a quarter million. Um.
I don't, I don't know. If, if, if the school districts are actually going to purchase tablets and other devices for student learners who aren't able to afford them otherwise, I don't know, and maybe 300,000 would be okay. It's just the problem is we still, we have to find 1.2 million plus from what we've already established.
Well, let's put, uh, 300,000 as a marker right now to see, you know, where, where the dollars end up and, you know, maybe we can do something more if, 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 uh, if, if money becomes available.
Works, works for me.
Works for me.
Okay. So, thank you. Please let me confirm. We're looking at $300,000 to the school districts and then is, does the two, the 250 and the 100, 250 for Penn State and 100 is on, uh, for CPI is on top of this?
Yes.
Yes. Yep. So roughly 650 also, all together.
Okay. All righty. Thank you.
And Mary Kay, are you able to just do a quick update there so we could fly back to the main tab to see where we're at total wise?
I should be able to.
Okay.
Oops. I, I, I have a thing with zeros, don't I? Didn't take it there. Yeah, 650. I don't think it took this though. 650.
Well, I'm just kind of looking at that, um, total, total allocated. So I, I think it would, I think it would have updated it there.
Yeah, it did. It did work, right? Correct?
Uh, yep, it did. Okay. So we're at 15.2. We need to be at 14.7. So we're about half, half a million to 600,000 out.
Okay.
Is that right?
All right.
Right. Not, not counting the fact that we hopefully have hundreds of thousands of additional, uh, dollars we can allocate to the county.
Uh.
Yeah. Uh, so Mark.
I don't think we've had time to put in an estimate for more staff costs, have we?
I'm, I'm going to just.
Yeah. Well, I was just going to say, one, one of the things we talked about, uh, towards the beginning of the meeting was we're eventually going to have to get to a point where we basically say, here's how much we're going to be taking for Center County Government. We essentially have to say, okay, that, that's sort of enough, and we hold the line there. And then Margaret had the idea of as municipalities or education or whomever get back to us and say, we can't spend the money. We're not able to find how to spend it. We could then have a list of basically, okay, we can't use 100,000. All right, we'll spend it on reimbursing for the district attorney's office or reimbursing for the sheriff or whomever. And we'll just, we'll just have that list ready to go in case we have more funds available. But we, that's essentially what we kind of talked about. So I, I think 3 million is probably a good point, stopping point at this point to say, okay, that's, we're, we're good right now.
Do you talk about for Center County Government?
That's right. Yep.
Uh, well, I would say whatever is left over, save for a couple of exceptions, you know, we should be helping ourselves.
Oh, that's what I meant. That's, that's exactly what I meant is we're basically holding it at 3 million right now. And, and if we find out that 200,000 of the municipal money they need to send back to us, we would then use it for the district attorney or for whatever we need to use it on, but we would kind of have that wish list or checklist ready to go as money returns.
All right.
Just because we, we, we could, we could, we could use $8 million of this money for ourselves probably, but it gets to the point where we're putting pressure, pressure, pressure on the other pots. And we're also not, I think we have $0 in contingency, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. So that, that's gone. So there's, there's no more PPE purchase or a second purchase of PPE, you know, so.
Now I got it.
Yeah.
Just these idiots between Harrisburg and Washington cannot figure out what the rules are of the game, and they keep changing the target. That makes it very frustrating. If we would have known this a month ago, we'd be having a different conversation today.
Yep.
Yeah, I think everybody's moving fast.
Margaret, do you, do you have any, uh, views on the county allocation end of things?
I'm fine. Do whatever we can do to ourselves. So.
Yeah, I was just wondering, do you think we're maybe a few hundred thousand dollars off, in, in which case Commissioner Pipe's suggestion makes a whole lot of sense? Or, or are we maybe off by 2 million? You know, is there, are there 2 million extra expenses we could charge to this?
So, Mark, were you asking me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Um, so with respect to the items on the county list, I think that we've, uh, are very close to what we will likely expend to reach that $3 million. Is that your question?
Uh, that was part of it. Uh, the other part is, you know, just a couple of days ago, we received guidance that widened the number of county employees' time it could be charged against the grant and also probably increased the number of hours per person we were already charging. Um, do you think that new wider guidance is a couple of hundred K? In which case I think your suggestion is great, or is it like, could we potentially charge an extra 2 million?
So, um, when we met earlier today, Jason was able to give us an estimate right out of the gate for the correctional facility and the sheriff's office, and I believe he said it would be an additional, what, Mary Kay, 5 million?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. And that's before we even include the district attorney's office and perhaps PD. So you, you know, take a step back from this. If, you know, if, if part of the goal wasn't to get this out into the community, a large portion of that 14.7 under these change guidelines could fall under that county bucket, but that's not, you know, um, there's an importance to, you know, spreading it around. So what we suggested was that we have a, add an additional column onto the, uh, county Excel spreadsheet that you have and put those numbers in there. And as we find that we have money in the other buckets that cannot be spent, we would say, okay, we're going to spend, we're going to, you know, slide this number over, slide this number over. Because at the end of the day, we don't, do not want to send any money back to Washington.
We won't do that.
No.
Right.
It's good, good to have that plan.
Yeah. So that's our.
We could spend the majority of this just on Center County Government if Carrie started at home.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, hence my point of we could spend $8 million of this money, uh, if we wanted to, but that's, you know, that's not, that's not, that's not the most prudent use of this. We need to help others and, um, it is tempting, but it's not prudent. So.
All right. That, that sounds fine. Then we'll line up county expenses that would be eligible, but would be above the, the 3,058,000 number and have them ready and waiting when other portions of this grant are not able to be spent, um, properly or in time.
I'm just adding that.
Well, we could have a conversation when we're done, after we, you know, have a wrap up, probably early part of November as to how much money's still out there. And then we'll charge off everything that we, that we possibly can to, to exhaust the entire amount.
All right. Anything else on this before I move on? Okay. So I'm just going to confirm the education will be $300,000 to school districts, whatever configuration I can, uh, make for that. The Center County, uh, Youth Center is going to go into another bucket. Um, Penn State's going to be, uh, 250,000 and CPI is 100,000. Okay. And then.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, the next category is medical. So we did quote pick up money here because you see we had originally allocated 12, and we are looking at Mount Mitney at 250. So we do have, uh, you know, additional monies in here, and I wanted to have some discussion, please, on this.
Have you heard from Center Volunteers in Medicine?
Um, no, Steve. They would actually be in the, uh, nonprofit application process. Well, I mean, I should say we, um, I believe they were part of the application, uh, part of the request. Uh, I can look that up, but they would actually apply in the nonprofit category. Unless you wanted me to do something differently.
Well, they are truly medical. So unless somebody has a better idea about where to, money is less in the, in the medical after Mount Mitney's contribution.
Well, I, I think this is a, another good place to make up some of the deficit, but Steve is, is raising a good point. Center Volunteers in Medicine is medical, and they really tend to work with people who will be most affected uh, by the pandemic from a, um, financial and health standpoint. So I'd be willing to chat about carving out a bit of this to go directly to Center Volunteers and maybe a couple of other healthcare organizations.
I'm certainly not opposed to that. I think that if we let the nonprofit process work its way through and get, um, and then when they apply through the nonprofits, we can take a look at their application, or we could even say to Molly, any nonprofits that are, uh, that are medical, you know, we could pull out or look at. But, um, I don't know if, uh, I don't, I mean, we can always say we're going to give, uh, uh, what's it, what is it called? This, this group, um, um, you know, we could, we could say we're going to give them 50,000.
CVIM?
Yeah, the CVIM. But, but also keep in mind that we gave, I believe we gave CVIM an allocation out of the CDBG DV money as well. So, um, I believe they've already received some, some money that way.
I don't think they're rolling in it. So whatever we could do to help them, I think would be very, most beneficial, particularly to the underserved folks in the community.
Yeah, I, I just think that it's, it's one of a small number of charities where you could say almost every dollar we would give them would be spent to benefit, uh, low income to no income, uh, individuals who've been affected by the pandemic.
Okay. All right. So Mary Kay, how would you proceed with that? Would you just reach out to, um, uh, their, their folks there?
Well, I mean, I, I think your approach of, you know, just having them apply through the nonprofit process, and if they, uh, you know, and then just, uh, give, you know, tell Molly, or I mean, you all are going to be making the decisions. CVIM definitely is putting in an application. So, uh, cause they had asked about, you know, they had asked through Commissioner Higgins for me to do a reminder. So we could then say they, um, you know, had a $10,000 loss. At that point, you could say they requested X, but we decided to give them, you know, $50,000. So it, it might be more productive just to play through the nonprofit, uh, application process.
Well, maybe a middle ground would be to reach out to them to let them know there's a special interest here and let them know, please, please apply through the nonprofit, but, you know, make it so that we can give additional funds if, if, when that, when that process is over with.
Sure. I, I'm happy to reach out to them. Do you just want me to ask them what they think their need is, or when I reach out to them, or what, what would you like me to express to Cheryl?
No, I, I think it's what we, what we said, which is, you know, we have a medical line item in the, in the, uh, grant here, and we can give, there's money that may be allocated through the nonprofits piece, yes, but there also could be additional funds for the, for them through this medical line item.
Okay. All righty. Be happy to do that.
Send the message that they're high on the list of, uh, of, uh, units in the, in the county that, that, that will be served by this grant. So find out how much they need.
Okay. Happy to do that.
Then realistic limits. Don't, don't, don't make it sound like, uh, there are lots of zeros behind it.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't think I will express, we have a million two in this particular bucket. How much of it do you need? I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't come out at that way, but just to ask them what their, their needs are. Anything else on this? So whatever we think we were going, so just realize that we do have some additional funds in this bucket, so to speak. So in the medical, right now, what we've, what we had allocated, what, excuse me, what we had budgeted, what's allocated, and then this is unspent. So that's just something to look at. Okay? Do you all have a desire for me to have a particular, do you want to, uh, may I ask you what you would think for CVIM? Or would you rather me just call and just get some, a probe and get some need first?
Yeah.
I think, uh, what's the, what's the number that we have left? How?
Well, in this particular bucket, we had a million two budgeted. We have 250,000 allocated to Mount Mitney. So 950,000 is total, uh, uh, remaining unspent.
I would suggest we leave the rest of it in limbo until we see what needs everybody has, uh, you know, beyond the obvious ones that, that we've allocated. But, uh, CVIM, you know, I, I think they're going to come up with a number for you, then hopefully we can, we can work with that, but, uh, we don't know where, you know, what other impacts this COVID thing's going to have on. I would keep our options open for the la, next couple of months for medical.
Okay.
I, I think that's a great approach. That's a great approach. Yep.
And of course, Mary Kay, whatever request CVIM has needs to be spent by the end of December.
Yes.
There's a limitation there.
Yes.
Or, or to backfill, uh, current losses. I mean, if they have expenses. I mean, if they have expenses or other impacts, you know, that they've sustained since March.
True, true.
And I think, Mary, and I think, Mary Kay, that'll extend to the Mount Nittany contribution as well as where we'll just kind of see how things play out. On, you know, October, we can revisit, November, we can revisit, just to see how that whole conversation is going to go.
All right, okay. Now, I just want to say I had Geisinger Health in there because they made, they made an initial request, but then it was, and so may I, may I take them out because they didn't do just Center County? Or do you want to have a discussion about that?
I, I, I think leaving it, leaving it there just so that their name is on there is fine, doesn't hurt anything. But they're still, they're still not appreciating the fact that we would really need to be able to understand how that money is helping Center County folks, not their whole system. So, yeah, I'd say just leave it there and we'll see if anything comes out of it.
All right, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Anything else on this category before I move on? Okay, I'm going to head over to the business category where we have $6 million. The only thing I am requesting here is I'm requesting, requesting like 50 bucks for Mark Higgins so he can go out and buy a new pair of shoes because he's been tramping all over the county. So.
I actually wore a hole in my shoes today. I don't know if it's going to.
Is that 39.95 or is that an even 50? How, how are we going to split this up?
There's actually a hole in my shoe.
We have to bid it out, so, yeah.
All right.
50 cents needs a bid mark on it.
Okay.
All right, and by the way, I, I happen to be in the community when I actually ran into him, so he really is out there. So, just had to add a little humor. Thank you, Mark, for doing all you're doing. I appreciate it as well as the other commissioners. So where we are on this, I, this, this will give me a time to, to mention about this. Currently, we have 259 responses, 350 in progress. And then at the CRBG meeting that we had earlier today, here's what I need your guidance on. At 5:00 PM tomorrow, the applications stop. So we believe that 350 in progress, and I don't know if Chad is still on this call or not. You know, we, we don't, we can have some idea of the percentage of where they are, but at some point we have to turn the spigot off. And I wondered, Chad, I don't know, are you still on this call, please?
I don't think Chad was ever on. Sometimes when myself or Natalie log on, it, it defaults, could be logging with Chad's information and then we switch it. So I don't, I don't think he was there. No, that's okay, yeah.
Yeah. So anyway, we have an option of, you know, turning this, you know, turning the faucet off right at 5:00 PM. Or we could give them until midnight, but all I'm saying is at some point in time, we do have to turn this off because otherwise it's going to delay our process in getting the money out. So I'm going to be quiet and ask for your guidance on what we do with this.
Yeah, I, I would request that it, you know, stays on until 11:00 or midnight or whenever it's a convenient time for somebody to turn it off. Because I'm talking to a lot of small businesses whose accounting people or actual outside accountants are completely overwhelmed by everything that's going on. And they started working with them a week and a half ago and their accountant still can't give them May to July revenues.
Okay.
Yeah, I think if, 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 hopefully most of them have an email on, on a, you know, and look, Qualtrics may have a option where you can sort of put a hovering message up so that when anybody logs back into the application, a message kind of hovers saying, you need to complete this by midnight. You know, that's the deadline period, so there might be a, an option like that. But also there could be an email that's sent to them. For anybody who has not hit submit, there could just be an email that's sent out saying, thanks for your interest. It's going to close at midnight if, you know, and that's where, that's how it is, so.
Okay.
Those are my thoughts, yeah.
Steve, do you have any insights, please? Maybe. So the, the only thing that I will mention, is that Steve, did I? So the only thing that I will mention is that, you know, with 350 in progress, we certainly are going to have some that will not make the deadline. We are going to have some unhappy people and I, there is part of me that feels bad about that and part of me as a small business owner myself, like thems are the breaks. So, you know, people need to, so I, I wanted to ask your insight one more time before I go. I, I will go with the fact that we will turn this off at midnight tomorrow, like probably 11:59 kind of thing on 9/11. Is that okay with the commissioners?
Works for me.
Yep, yep.
Okay, thank you. And we, thank you, thank you, Mark. So we have been receiving some applications at the Willabang Building. Typically, not, not many, I think we've had three so far. When people are saying they have technical issues, SBDC has been fielding a lot of them, but what the technical issues tend to run down to is that without being harsh or rude, I think it comes down to operator error, that they're not quite sure how to use technology and they're not seeking out other assistance and get frustrated. But we are still, if applications are coming in by paper, Krista has been awesome. She has been scanning them in and we've been sending them over to SBDC and they are putting that, they are logging that in as an application. So nobody is getting left behind with that process. The system has not crashed, not given any problems, but I just want to indicate to you that if, if a constituent out in the public says your, your system crashed or it's technology issues, it, they tend, it tends to be operator issues, not the system issues. And we've done our best, particularly CBI, excuse me, SBDC in trying to make, you know, really assist and help people. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that?
Well, the only time this should really matter is if it, if it forbids somebody from getting their application turned in timely, in which we can make whatever accommodations or exceptions if there is, if there's technical issues. But I wouldn't worry about it otherwise.
Right. Right, thank you. Anything else on this? I'm heading on, we have just a couple more categories. So nonprofits, we had originally budgeted $800,000 and I've been working with the Center Foundation. I'd be happy to provide the application that they have provided to us. They have gone, gone through two phases. And so we're essentially using their application with some additions from how, from our business application. And we ran over this with the, the CRBG team and they gave me some feedback on this. So where we're looking at this process is that, this is what I please need your, your voting on this, your perspectives. We are going to earmark $800,000 to the Center Foundation. Of course, no money will be transferred, but they will be collecting applications on our behalf and that, but they will serve much as the same role as SBDC is doing. We will, there is a 2% administration fee for this, so it would be $16,000, which is actually less than we've paid to the SBDC, which that was $47,000 is what we have. You'll see that shortly. But I just want to ask if there are any, please, any discussions, questions, comments?
I think, I think it sounds good there, Mary Kay, in terms of they will be allocating 800,000 or they'll be, that basically will be our final allocation for nonprofits will be 800,000. And then, and their, their administrative fee would be coming out of the 200,000. And I, I think we eventually have to get an understanding about, we will probably be tapping into county funds. Not county funds out of this grant, but general fund dollars to help support some of the administrative aspects of this. So I think we, and also I know ZA is a valued partner, but they are a, they cost money. And so we just want to, I think, understand how much they're costing us and begin to look at that a little bit closer, so. But no, 800,000 looks good here, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, so I will send the application over to you. The, the team had a couple of suggestions, I'm going to make those changes. So I have the frequently asked questions for this and then for the, for the application I will send over to you. If it all looks okay to you, I just want to notify you that this will, this application will go live on Monday, the 14th at 9:00 AM and it will go down on the 28th of, of September at 5:00 PM. So just like the small business folks, they will have 14 full days. Center Foundation is equipped and ready to be the technical partner. They are going to be the people that will be collecting the documentation that is necessary, giving us the recommendations of who, you know, how they think the money should be spent. And then you, of course, the three of you will make the final determination on how that is. We will have to do an agreement. I should have mentioned that on the business as well. We have to have a legal agreement, just like we did with municipalities, before we can distribute any money or funds. Any questions or comments?
Sounds good.
Yeah, also, sounds very good. I think, I think my, my thinking is going to be where if we have about 700 or 800 total interested parties for businesses and it's been about 50/50, people kind of getting on then dropping off, I think nonprofits will be 90% will apply for this. Like, you know, let's say, let's say 200 sign up, I think you're going to have 180, 190 of them sign up and, and go through. I think they're more adept at it, so it'll be interesting to see if there's a trail off. With the business one, it seemed like it kind of ticked up, ticked up, ticked up. So, so anyway, so we'll see, but that was good, thanks, Mary Kay. I don't know, Mark, are you, are you okay? Your video's there and you're.
Well, my laptop's getting a little old, so if I, if I move the screen, it appears that the camera doesn't like it.
Oh geez, okay.
So, yeah, I, I'm, I'm in general agreement with what we've been talking about. I wish we could give more to the nonprofits, but there's only so much money to go around. And to your point, Commissioner Pipe, we're going to have many hundreds of businesses applying and they're having some very significant losses. The nonprofit world is smaller and while I'm sure they've had losses, the total number is nowhere near as big as in the business sector.
Molly thought that there would be about 300 or so applications and she concurs. She mentioned what both of you were saying is that, you know, nonprofits are pretty used to doing these applications, so it's probably not going to be that much of a challenge. And then there was concern that, gosh, nonprofits, you know, maybe, maybe Center Foundation doesn't know quite all of the nonprofits, like EMS or ambulances and fire companies. And Molly assured me that they work with those entities very frequently and that, you know, they are going to be putting their feelers out, you know, to reach out to people and will kind of be the support system for them as well. They are doing the application differently. That application is going to be done on Google Docs, it's not through Qualtrics. And that application, I talked to Molly a lot about, you know, capacity and she said, that she just does not think it's going to be a problem, but I just wanted to let you know that it's going, it's going to be different. The reason I feel very, I have like safety and security about it is they just went through two rounds of funding and they've been using the same document. So they seem, you know, Molly seems very confident that it will work out just fine. And anything else on this? I apologize, I do have a more thing. We will have a link on our website, quote, a button, I'm working with Chad on that. That will basically, that link will go over to the Center Foundation and vice versa. So it's not that people have to go to Center Foundation, they will go to our website. Chad is going to be giving out the, the notify me section again to everybody. And like I did with the businesses, I went through my emails and any phone calls that I had with nonprofit, excuse me, with for-profits and called them directly. I will do the same for nonprofits so that they know this is live and active on Monday. So I keep on saying that's it, but I think that's it. Is that okay? Does anybody have any questions, comments, discussions?
None from me, I think we're okay.
Okay. I'm moving on to the next to last one. You're going to see that this one played out a little bit differently than I thought, to be honest with you. We had originally budgeted $800,000 for this and I believe so far the only thing that we could, I'm still waiting for MOUs for the Small Business Development Center. Our solicitor has that in hand. But when we looked at the considerations, if you take a look, please, at the bottom of my page, please know that many of the organizations that we thought that had requested money for this, and this was, it was my error, I thought they would be in this bucket, but it turns out most of them are either a 501(c)(3), so they will be applying through the nonprofit process. And the Happy Valley Adventure Bureau is a 501(c)(6), so they cannot apply for funding through this process because the nonprofit is only 501(c)(3) and 501(c)(19). So you are going to see here again, this is the month, amount of money that we had budgeted. This is really the only part that's coming out of this bucket. So I don't know if you have any discussions, questions about, about this bucket because we do have remaining funds here.
Now, I just have a question. There's no way we can get money to the, to the tourism bureau through this. Is that hard in stone? I mean, I, I can't, I can't believe other counties haven't accomplished that task somehow.
What, I, I asked that question, I, I'm confident it was about three times. So here's what I found. The, the short answer is if they are 501(c)(6) and 501(c)(6)'s were excluded because I guess the NRA and Planned Parenthood are 501(c)(6)'s. So how could we get money to them? We could get money to them through our administration fees, under our grant admin. We could also get money to them is if somebody else, a 5, pardon me, a 501(c)(3) wanted to give money to them, that they would have to do a sub-recipient agreement. Those, those are the answers that I have received and I'm open to discussion, ideas or anything.
So Mary Kay, just out of curiosity, if you go down that spreadsheet there, are you saying that all of those organizations with 501(c)(6)'s?
No, I, no, just the Happy Valley Adventure Bureau. You'll see where I, I didn't have the page down there. Balfour Bureau was giving money through the municipalities and you see the 501(c)(3)'s. I had a long conversation with Darlene from the Grinch Fair, so she would be applying through that. The one I don't know, to be honest with you, is I don't know what Phillipsburg Revitalization is. Does anybody know that?
It's essentially the Main Street program for Phillipsburg, but they can't use the designation Main Street because the MBEDP has kept that particular designation. It's local politics in Phillipsburg.
Yes.
Do you know what the designation is?
Excuse me?
Are they 501(c)(3)?
I'm very sure they're 501(c)(3).
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I, I think Steve is raising a good point. There's got to be some kind of way that we can get some money to the Visitors Bureau. Now unfortunately, they're a (c)(6), but is there a (c)(3) out there somewhere that can, we can funnel the money through? Because Fritz is telling me that if he can have some money to market State College as a quick, short vacation destination over weekends for people in all the big cities around us, you know, that he could put some heads in beds and some people eating in restaurants. But his funding at this point is practically negative.
Could you, could either Mark or Mary Kay contact Fritz and see if he can find out through his state association if other counties are capable or thought of some way of making this happen? Is there some vehicle to assist them?
Well, sure. Now that I'm done contacting all the small businesses, I'd be happy to pivot and try to work with Fritz on this a bit. You know, there's, there's got to be some way that we can help these economic development organizations and maybe working a little bit with Mary Kay now that, thank God, we've got better guidelines. If we can take some of their submissions and change them a little bit, make them eligible for the grant money.
You mean eligible for the nonprofit?
Well, this is a different bucket, Mary Kay. This is the Economic Development Organization bucket. And the initial definition from DCED was talking about specific organizations that have the EDO, the Economic Development Organization certification, which is not many in Center County. I think the MBEDP has it. I think Ben Franklin has it. It's possible that the SBDC has it.
So, Mark, am I hearing that you're willing to contact Fritz or do you want me? I'm happy to do whatever you ask, but are you going to contact?
I'm happy to make the initial contact to Fritz. I'm also happy to work with you to try to figure out some way that we can benefit, especially our downtowns, because Downtown State College is suffering terribly right now. Not that things aren't fabulous in Belfont either, but Downtown State College is really hurting.
And so I appreciate that and I appreciate that you will contact him. Just know that I've been on the phone. Rob Schmidt's very talkative, so I've been on the phone with him several times. He does plan on applying for the, a nonprofit grant because he has a (c)(3). But if you want to do something else differently, I just want to say what his plans are.
Well, perhaps that, like we did with CBIM, perhaps he should apply through the Center Foundation so that we have a nice coordinated standardized effort on it. But maybe like CBIM, he's a group where we could pull his monetary request into economic revitalization and tourism because the Downtown Improvement District would meet that definition. And if he puts in something that, you know, meets the guidelines and would be impactful, I'd love to give him more than whatever 800,000 divided by 300 is.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I want to be careful about is we've done a really good job of this, which is I would want to try to reduce the money we're giving out to an organization and then they're giving it out to people. I'd want to, want to try to reduce that. So if there are costs that the small business developments, I'm sorry, the, they, Downtown State College Improvement District has, that they can recoup for, that we can help them with, that's great. But I want to try to, from my standpoint, I want to try to reduce the, them then taking that money and then divvying it out. I prefer us to be divvying it out.
Right, but, and I agree with you. We could, but we could work with whoever it would be, the DID, the CBICC, the Borough of State College, whoever. But we could work with them to say, hey, you have a project for economic development. You have a project for tourism. We know what the guidelines are now, finally. What can we put in place where you could get the money spent in three months and have it benefit Downtown Belfont, have it benefit Downtown State College, have it benefit Downtown Phillipsburg?
Yeah, I, I think my thing is, or not my thing, but I don't know if they can do that. They, I think it has to be for COVID-related, you know, impacts. I don't know if they could go out and do a, you know, you were talking about marketing the area, Mark, or if they could do, I don't think they can use it. You can't, I don't think you can use it for marketing the area right now.
Even, even if the goal would be to fill restaurants and hotels that are drastically affected by COVID?
That's correct. I don't, I don't, I don't think that's the purpose for it. Yeah. I mean, you can, we could ask ZA, we could ask DCD. DCD might have it in their questionnaire. But my understanding is that you cannot use it to market the area. Again, I mean, we can, we can get guidance on that, but I just, I've, I've heard that before and just I'm raising that as a, as a thing, as a, as a point. But one of the things in this category from an economic revitalization standpoint is there are a number of different designations, as we were talking about earlier. SBDC, CDIF, CDOs, there's a number of them in there that, and so the CBICC, part of that, Machanan Valley is designated as that. And so there may be some things that they did or have done for businesses that they're assisting related to COVID-19 that we can assist with. But I don't think you have them listed there. I just was, especially Machanan Valley, I think that's important, so.
Yeah, I had originally asked Dan to submit any COVID-related expenses he had, but I think you kind of had tunnel vision and he's like, Mark, we've, we've spent a few hundred dollars on PPE and cleaning supplies for our own offices. And he said, I'm not going to bother you guys with that. But maybe now we know the guidelines, we can ask him to think a bit bigger.
Can I ask you, from my understanding, is Machanan Valley, is Sam LaFur's organization different than Phillipsburg Revitalization?
Completely different.
Okay. What is it called? I, I, I used to know it. I don't know it anymore.
Just put down MBEDP and look it up in Google later.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to put it on there just so I didn't have it noted. So am I hearing, or let me ask, please, that we, that you were asking me just to keep this bucket as it is and then we'll do some research to determine how maybe we could use this money in different ways? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what I'd like us to do, at least for a little while.
Yeah, and if we need to reallocate it somewhere else, then we can later. But for the moment, let's leave that marker in there.
Okay. Okay. All righty. Anything else on this? So I'm going to head to our last tab and that is PPE. So you will see that what we had, what we had budgeted, what we had spent. We actually, this was one of the only expenses I had in the September 1st financial status report to DCED was this number. And we've been getting updates on the CRBG team from the EMA team. And they seem to be working to get the number, you know, to get the product out there to, to school districts. To, let me look at my notes here, please. Police, ambulance. They have, they are going to earmark some money, excuse me, some PPE for elections, Commissioner Pipe. And they've given out to some first responders. The thing that they are having difficulty with is trying to get them, these, any PPA out to businesses because people like the CBICC and the Downtown Improvement District and such, they are a little concerned about storage as far as for people and office hours, I think, with some of them, for businesses to pick it up. There was a suggestion that Dawn, I believe, from CEDACOG, from, from COG, pardon me, not CEDACOG, from COG, might be able to help with any of the distribution. And Margaret, I actually don't remember, I don't remember that gentleman's name. Is there anything that you want to mention about that?
No, I'm good.
Okay. So any discussions? So it looks like we have, you know, $12,000 kind of left here. Anything you want me to do with this? Talk about any discussion, please?
So, did we ever resolve the request from Mel Curtis?
No.
Is that, is that going to come under the nonprofit application?
Mel's gonna, Mel is going to apply through the nonprofit portion.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's going to come through.
Yeah, I, I just, thought just occurred to me.
I will say that Molly and I already had discussions with Mel, excuse me, about Mel. And I asked her to put him on her radar screen and she said that she didn't think that would be a problem at all. That, but that she would look out and make sure that he knows about the process.
Okay, excellent. Sounds good.
Anything else about?
Mel is one of those situations where I think we need to make, might make an exception later on if, if need be, because he's still feeding a lot of people.
Okay.
Yeah, on the, on the PPE, do you, do you need me to do the job on that one too for our businesses?
I don't know. I mean, I don't really know if I have an opinion. I'm asking your opinions, what you all want me to do with this. I mean, I know that Jeff and Jody and Abby have been down at the Transportation Center trying to get the PPE out, but they, they did not come to the Thursday meeting for a discussion. Is it, we had, we had a question about this. Do you want them to do an update every Thursday at the Board of Commissioners meeting about their PPE distribution?
I would.
I, I actually thought that that was a request that was made previously, but we didn't have it on the agenda for today. And as it turned out, Jeff was actually involved in a delivery. So, fine for today.
So Margaret already made that request to Jeff, so I, I don't know if there's any more discussion that we need to have on this or anything you want to talk to me about or anything I can help with. As far as the business distribution, you know, what, I don't want to speak for people, but what Jeff was seeming to convey to us was that, you know, he's almost afraid to open it up to all businesses. He did say that maybe, you know, restaurants and bars will have the biggest need, but that, you know, once you open up the, the door and you don't have enough for everybody, then he didn't know if people would be unhappy. And that, that's the only thing I will convey. And Margaret, if you want to convey anything that I might have missed.
All right, just back to the distribution piece of it. He did, CBICC and the Downtown Improvement District really don't have the space to be a distribution point. So we were trying to talk about other alternatives today and some, and some other locations, like maybe some other central locations where those agencies could be helpful in distributing it, but they wouldn't be necessarily the distribution site.
Anything else on this item, please?
Well, we bought this stuff in a rush so we could use it.
Yeah, it boggles my mind, boggles my mind that we are not able to get this out here. I mean, this is not, it's, I mean, it's not, am I missing something? If I'm missing something about, about distributing this stuff, please, somebody let me know. But it is, it just, it's, it's getting to a point where I'm not sure what, why this is so difficult. And so, I mean, we can.
I think, I think it's being distributed to the, to the, to the reasonable places, like the schools and whatnot. I just don't know that we've given a clear direction as to how to get it out to the business community and the not-for-profit. So I, I don't know how we, I don't know how we accomplished that. I think our initial thought was to give it to the, to the CBICC, et cetera, and, you know, have it divvied out that way. But I think we need to maybe sit down and come up with a, with a better plan for, for the distribution itself. Because I'm sure that it's been confusing as to how we're, how it's supposed to occur.
The one thing that Jeff was saying, Jeff and his team was saying today is that, he did try to get some out to Mount Nitney and some N95 masks, but then there's like a fit test that has to happen with that. So they were, I took it as they were reluctant, but then they, they are, I guess, going to take some. And then he has reached out to Gina Thompson from Belfont, Stan LaFura. They at least sounded to me like they reached out. I don't know for sure. But then he also mentioned that maybe that COG could help with the distribution because he was wondering if part of the factor was people didn't really know or was too cumbersome for them to go the whole way to Milesburg to the Transportation Center. So he was looking into, again, COG being a distribution site, Alpha Fire Company. He even thought about, you know, maybe the aging, our Department of Aging in the mall. So that's all I can convey as far as what I heard. And Margaret, you can please help me.
Yeah, I mean, that's a perfect idea. Rent, rent out some space at the mall. I believe we can use CARES Act funds to rent out, rent out the space. And there could be a PPE distribution site. Yeah, I mean, there you go. Perfect. I mean, it's, yeah. So, yeah.
That, that sounds like a good start to me. The mall is somewhat centrally located between State College and Belfont on major roads, plenty of parking. I mean, we've got businesses and nonprofits who have no money buying stuff at probably, buying PPE at twice what we paid for it, and we got it sitting in a warehouse.
Yeah, I think the frustration, Steve, is that we have an EMA office to do this. And if we need to create the plan to distribute PPE, why do we have an EMA office? That's my thing. And if you can help me with that, let me know.
Well, I think you need to give them direction as to what, you know, how you want this done. I know we, we talked about this earlier with the business, with the business community kind of taking, taking care of themselves. And now, you know, the CBICC and whoever doesn't want to take any of that on, which I, which I completely get, but now we have to give other direction. And, you know, how do we get it out there? You know? If, if, hey, if we tell them, hey, just go out and make sure it gets done and record the results. I mean, I'm sure that'll happen. So I'm just thinking out loud.
Right, Steve. We're, they encountered a problem in the private sector. You come to the operations people and the executives saying, I got a problem. Here's a couple of possible solutions. What should I do? Where are potential solutions? Why are we having to think of this stuff?
Yeah. I mean, we, we can, we can have another meeting to talk about how we get PPE out. I mean, we can do that. That's, that's, that's fine. Let's, that's.
Well, I think, I think, let me, let me check with those guys and see what's going on. Because I know they've been down there working. So let me find out what, what, what the exact answer is and I'll double back to everybody.
All right, that sounds good. Sounds good.
And the final category. And the, the final category is the, I, I'm sorry, I, I just, I don't want to rush it. Is there anything else you'd like to discuss or talk about on this?
Nope.
Okay. And then the final piece is, although we have a zero in our contingency bucket right now, I want to take us back to the pie chart in looking at this, is that, you know, we do have unspent, what, from what was budgeted, allocated and unspent. So, I think we have some cushions, but I'll invite any discussions. If you want me to change anything around, I'm happy to do that.
The only other thing that I, that as I've expressed before, I think whatever we can do to help out Belfont Borough and their policing costs would be very much appreciated.
Okay. So, currently what we have in Belfont Borough is 64169. That, I'll just state that, and I'll let any discussion to occur if anybody wants to say anything.
Well, I think as we, as we move forward and we see how much money we have left over, I would just like that to be a conversation point. And I think I've had that discussion before.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that being a discussion point.
I'll just put it in, in the, into this sheet, so we just can come back to it. Is that okay? Anything else before we close down today?
I'm good.
Just to jump back to the education standpoint, Mary Kay.
Yes.
What do you think the timeline would be on getting them some letters? What, what do you think would that would look like?
I think, I, I think the biggest, we could probably use a great deal of what was said in the municipality letter. So, I'm hopeful, like, for next week, I just, I would want to get these numbers, you know, cleaned up and get this over to you. I, I want to sit and think about it a little bit, make sure I have the numbers down. And then, you know, hopefully, we could get some letters out next week. But I want to get your okay, your final blessing on numbers before I do anything. Margaret, would you agree I'd be able to use much of what the municipality letter is saying?
I think so. And they'll need recipient agreements, because it's the same setup. You know, allowable expenditures versus not allowable, but that recipient agreement's pretty much intact, be tailored to fit the school districts.
Should I, would Betsy then be the person to review that? Like, can she make an impact on that, on the school districts?
So, what I did for the Penn State recipient agreement was I took the municipality recipient agreement, and I made the changes, suggested changes, and then forwarded to her. So, we would do the work on it and then send to her. But I think it's really just a matter of substitution, you know, where we've said municipality, we'd say school district. And then she, yes, would take a look at it before it would go. And also with the municipalities, to let them know what their allocation was, we sent the letter to get that news out there, so they could start to prepare. And then, a few days later, four days later, we sent the actual recipient agreement, so that, you know, I, we don't want to hold up the allocation letter any longer than we need to. Give them that, give them maximum time.
Yep. So, I, I can imagine that I can do that next week. I don't know how much cleanup is going to have to happen with the small business piece and then the nonprofit launching, but I'll do my best. I keep, I'm doing my, I'm, I'm doing my many hours. I'll keep at it. Anything else? I appreciate everybody's time.
Okay, thanks, Mary Kay, as always. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all your time. Thank you so much. And I'll, I'll get cranking on this. Y'all get some shoes, Mark?
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
All right.
I'm gonna call Fritz right now.
All right, thank you very, very much. Appreciate your help, folks. Yeah, I hope you have a wonderful evening. Yeah, I hope you have a wonderful evening.